Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order this public meeting of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York. I'd like to announce that we will be going into executive session at the conclusion of the first part of our public meeting to discuss personnel matters. The Board will then reconvene in public session after the executive session. I would like to read the following notice into the record. Meetings of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York are open to the public, and the Board welcomes the interest of those who attend. Public has ample opportunity to communicate with the Board. Public hearings on the Board's policy calendar are scheduled one week prior to the Board's regular meetings, and members of the public who wish to communicate with the Board are invited to express their views at such public hearings. Furthermore, the Board holds additional public hearings each year in all of the five boroughs at which members of the public may also speak. In addition, written communications to the Board are distributed to all trustees. The Board must carry out the functions assigned to it by law and therefore cannot tolerate conduct by members of the public that disrupts its meetings. In the event of disruptions, including noise, which interferes with Board discussion, after appropriate warning, I will ask the security staff to remove persons engaging in disruptive conduct. The university may seek disciplinary and/or criminal sanctions against persons who engage in conduct that violates the university's rules or state laws which prohibit interference with the work of public bodies. I would like to request that everyone take a moment to switch off his or her cellphone. Thank you. As usual, CUNY TV is making available an important community service by transmitting the public sessions of this afternoon's meeting of the Board live on cable channel 75. This meeting is also being webcast live and can be accessed by going to www.cuny.edu. Public session of this Board meeting will be available as a podcast within 24 hours and can be accessed via the CUNY website. I would like to congratulate trustee Rita DiMartino on being appointed as a member of the New York State Commission on National and Community Service by Governor David Patterson. In addition, trustee DiMartino was presented with a Community Service Award from the Board of Directors of the National Puerto Rican Day Parade at their 2009 Educational Leadership Project banquet on May 13, 2009. Congratulations, trustee DiMartino. Congratulations also to trustee Wellington Chen, who was very positively profiled as the New Yorker of the Week on New York One recently. And I would also like to congratulate trustee Frida Foster Talbert on her appointment by Governor David Patterson as a Commissioner for the New York State Workers' Compensation Board. Congratulations. I would like to congratulate trustee Hugo Morales, who was honored at the sixth Annual Dominican Cultural Association of Yonkers Gala and recognized on that occasion by many government leaders. Most recently, he was an honoree at the Latino Center on Aging's 17th Golden Age Awards Annual Banquet. Congratulations, trustee Morales. Congratulations are also in order to Chancellor Matthew Goldstein on receiving the YIVO Institute for Jewish Research Lifetime Achievement Award at their 84th Annual Benefit Dinner on May 26. And only last week Chancellor Goldstein was honored by the Chinatown Partnership Local Development Corporation, led by trustee Wellington Chen, at their second annual benefit and awards gala, saluting those who have made Chinatown a better place to live, work, and visit. Congratulations. I'm pleased to report that the Board held its Bronx Borough hearing at Ostos Community College on Monday, June 15, 2009. Vice Chair Philip Berry chaired the hearing, which was attended by trustee Hugo Morales, Simone Lamont, Manfred Phillip, also members of the Chancellery and all of CUNY's Bronx College Presidents. A summary of the proceedings of this hearing has been circulated to the trustees and the chancellor's cabinet, and transcripts are available in the office of the secretary. I want to take a moment to thank my fellow trustees for their participation at this year's many commencements. Each one is a very special celebration of the achievements of CUNY students and faculty, and I very much appreciate how involved all the trustees are in these commencements. It is with great sadness that we note the recent passing of Dr. Thomas K. Minter, a distinguished and much-loved educator, who served as a former acting president of York College and dean emeritus of Professional Studies and professor emeritus of Secondary, Adult, and Business Education at Lehman College. Dr. Minter worked with public education programs in New York City for many, many years, and he was a former New York City Public Schools Deputy Chancellor. We will miss Dr. Minter greatly. And now, at center court, under the non-retractable roof, we have the Kingsborough Community College Women's Tennis Team, which recently won the national championship at the National Junior College Athletic Association Division III Championships held in Tucson, Arizona. They scored 33 team points, well ahead of the second-place team, which managed 13 and a half team points. They crushed the opposition. I would like now to call on President Regina Perucci to introduce the Kingsbury Community College Student Tennis Champions.
Well, as you said, these are an amazing group of young women, and they were, according to the people who ran the tennis tournament, they were the best team that that tournament had ever seen. So, we are enormously proud. It's the first time in the history of Kingsborough Community College that the entire women's tennis team has qualified for the NJCAA National Championship. All singles players and three doubles teams advanced to the finals, and in addition to the team championship, KCC won national championships in four different singles and two doubles flights. Five of the athletes became national champs, with all six earning All-America honors. And I'm just going to tell you a little bit about each of them. Arina Kakuji is a liberal arts major. She was born in Yokohama, Japan, and she is the number-one player in the nation for this division and a two-time NJCAA All-American. Nina Mayewski is a business administration major. She was born in Kiev in the Ukraine. She's a two-time NJCAA All-American. She won second in singles and first in doubles. Ipraksa Yushkova is a liberal arts major. She was born in Batumi, Republic of Georgia. She's a two-time All-American also. She won third in the singles and second in the doubles. Hershala Reed is a biology major. She graduated this June, and she was born in Jamaica, West Indies. She's a two-time All-American as well. Ariella Kamen is a liberal arts major from Brooklyn. She's also a two-time All-American. One of our tennis players is not here today, but she hails from Phoenix, Arizona. And finally, Amita Rashova is a biology major, and she comes from Tashkent, Uzbekistan, and she's an alternate player for the women's tennis team. I'd also like to tell you that our coach is here, Barry Goldsmith. He won the Region 15 Tennis Coach of the Year and the NJCAA Women's Tennis Coach of the Year at the national tournament. And assistant coach Joseph Alardo is here. Dr. Sam Shepard, who runs our Health and Physical Education Department, and our Kingsborough Athletic Director, who puts it all together for them, Gina Cranwinkle, who is -- she's the youngest athletic director in the CUNY Conference, and she's vice president for the CUNY Community Colleges in the CUNY Athletics Conference. So, we are enormously proud of our coaches and, of course, of our students, who are amazing. This is the giant, giant trophy that will sit out in the trophy case outside my office, and they are just amazing students and amazing athletes. Many of them -- I think there's one person who's a student athlete of the -- is there one person? Four scholar athletes on the team, so we're really delighted about that. So, if they -- I think --
Here, here.
She wants to get you a picture. You hand me your camera.
Thank you very much, and congratulations again. May I now call on trustee Valerie Beal to announce college and faculty honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several CUNY faculty have received prestigious Fulbright honors. They include City College of New York education professors Catherine Franklin and Amita Gupta, who received 2009-2010 Fulbright Scholar Grants, and Hunter College Assistant Professor of Classical and Oriental Studies, Alexander Ellison, who received a Fulbright Fellowship. Congratulations to all. Hunter College Assistant Professor of English, Michael Thomas, recently won the World's Richest Literary Prize, the International IMPAC Dublin Literary Award, which comes with a stipend of 100,000 euros for his debut novel, Man Gone Down. Congratulations. The Center for Crime Prevention and Control at John J. College of Criminal Justice just launched the National Network for Safe Communities to reduce violent crime and overt drug markets and to build a new standard of practice for reducing crime across the nation. Professor David Kennedy, who will co-chair this network initiative with John J. President Jeremy Travis, was recently profiled in New Yorker magazine. Sherry Cleary, Executive Director of the New York City Early Childhood Professional Development Institute at CUNY, was appointed by Governor David Patterson as a member of the New York State Early Childhood Advisory Council. Congratulations. Kingsborough Community College Physical Science Professor Varadar Ridi was selected for an appointment at the highly competitive Brookhaven National Lab Oratory Faculty and Student Teams FAST program for the summer of 2009. Congratulations to them. This concludes my report.
Thank you very much. May I now call on trustee Kathleen Pacilli to announce student and alumni honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hunter College alumnus Holland Cotter was awarded the 2009 Pulitzer Prize for criticism for his wide-ranging reviews of art worldwide. Congratulations. Several CUNY students have received prestigious Fulbright honors. They include recent Hunter College Honors student Tonya Tiwill and Queens College Aaron Copeland School of Music graduate student Jonathan Singer, who were awarded Fulbright Grants, and City College graduate students Elon McKenna and Sarah Ruffino, who received Fulbright teaching assistantships. Congratulations to all. LaGuardia Community College students Jonathan Chavezz and Kri Colwell were selected as 2009 Kaplan Educational Foundation Scholars for their outstanding academic records. Also, honors student Edgar Romero was recently elected an international president of Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society. Congratulations to all. City College recent art graduate Kylie Mayer won the 2009 Mortimer Hayes Brandeis Traveling Fellowship. Congratulations to you. The Queens College student newspaper, Night News, has won the American Press Association's first place with Special Merit Award for the second year in a row. Queens College graduate Daniel Pollack was one of the two students in the country selected for such a prestigious judicial internship at the Supreme Court. Congratulations to each of you, and, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. You have at the table a list of grants and gifts received by the university since our April 27, 2009, meeting. I'd like now to call on Chancellor Goldstein to present his report on recent activities.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This meeting marks the official close of yet another academic year at this institution, and I'd like to take just a brief moment to acknowledge the very good, hard, creative work that takes place every day on our campuses by the extraordinary presidents that are seated around the table, Mr. Chairman. We are blessed at this university of having great leaders, and it's a pleasure for me to work with presidents and see the way in which they shape and move their institutions in a way that ultimately benefits the students in very important ways at this university. So, I just want to thank all of them for their extraordinary work. And also the vice chancellors and senior members of this administration, also tireless workers who work very closely with the presidents and with the Board to carry out the policies and regulatory requirements of the university. I thank you for your partnership, both presidents and the members of the senior administration, and of course, the faculties across this university. Some in the audience with us today, without your guidance, we would not have graduated 37,329 students this past academic year. That is a high watermark for the university. 10,500 associate degrees, 18,000 baccalaureate degrees, 130 law degrees, and that pass rate continues to go up, Michelle. We couldn't be happier with your leadership. And 360 doctoral degrees. The university is alive with output in ways that we have not seen in a very, very long time, and it's just a privilege to be part of this for the university. CUNY continues to receive huge numbers of freshmen and transfer students. For the fall 2009, we thus far have received more students than were enrolled and applied and then enrolled in all of 2008. Applications are continuing to come in each week in significantly higher numbers than comparable weeks in the last year. There is a reason that we're seeing this keen interest in the university. I think it is a mixture of two major components. One, an economy that is creating hardship and problems for young people and not such young people to take the skills that they have acquired and turn that into employment. And so, universities are always a drawing card for people who need to step back a moment and shore up their skills and better position themselves in a highly competitive economic climate. But secondly, the progress of this university has been nothing less than extraordinary. The value of a CUNY degree is at a very, very high mark at this point, and again, that is contributing to students that have options, many options, that they can exercise but are choosing CUNY as the place to get their education and advance their careers. We have to be careful, and I've discussed this with the presidents, and I think the Board needs to be aware of this as well. There is a duality that is pulling in opposite directions here that requires a delicacy and balance, and that is, we have to ensure that the students that are accepted into our institutions can be given the kind of educational experience that we want them to achieve. And given real fiscal constraints that we have in this university, we have to make sure that the students that we do accept have that experience, at least to the degree that we can ensure it, and not be persuaded necessarily only by other variables that often fall into the equation that people make in inviting students to study. This is a university that has always been a welcoming place for students to study, but we have to ensure that we're doing the very best that we can in deploying resources so that those students can achieve the goals that they have for themselves. And that is the balance that we are challenged with today and probably will be challenged in the next few years, because I really don't see this economy changing very rapidly, and we will still have many students that want to get access to the very fine work that goes on in the university. Let me switch briefly to matters of money. On June 15, the mayor and the city council speaker announced a budget agreement for fiscal 2010. The full city council gave final approval to this budget just last Friday. With respect to the community colleges, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board, and looking specifically at the operating side, we were in the hole by about $36.3 million as we went to the final lap to satisfy our budget. I'm pleased to report that out of that $36.3 million, we were able to recover $21.4 million, still leaving us with a hole of $15 million. But that extraordinary push at the end of getting about $21 million, Mr. Chairman, is very much the work of one individual that I would like to single out. I don't know if he is in the audience, but is John Kotowski here with us today?
He's at City Council now.
He's at City Hall?
[laughing]
Well, he's continuing to try to scrape some more dollars for us. John Kotowski has really camped out at City Hall for the last few months and has really led the effort to recruit as many dollars as we have, and I just want the record to read that we are deeply grateful for his good work and the work of the CUNY Legislative Action Committee, our presidents, our faculty, all of us, who have worked so hard on this part of the operating budget to get additional dollars. In addition to the $21.4 million that we received, there was an $8 million restricted set of dollars under the Economic Downturn Assistance Program that we are analyzing now to see how those dollars would be deployed. And one thing that I'm not too pleased with, an $8 million allocation, sort of betting on the come line with respect to future collective bargaining needs. When you think about this, collective bargaining is typically picked up by the city government, but this is now really taken out of our budget to deploy for that particular eventuality, and that's something that's going to need some additional discussion. In addition to what I just mentioned, there are other good news in the city budget. $2.75 million was added to the Peter F. alone City College Scholarships for a total of $9.5 million for next fiscal year. I'm pleased to report that the Blackmail Empowerment Initiative received an additional $2.5 million and a number of smaller items that will help this university move forward. I'm delighted to report that when Mayor Bloomberg gave a commencement address, he was at two of our campuses this spring, first at Baru College and then at Kingsborough Community College. When he was at Kingsborough Community College, he announced publicly his support for the efforts that we have been making to develop a new community college at the City University of New York, and to get the mayor's support of that initiative is no small feat, and we are delighted with his endorsement. I've also had discussions with Secretary of Education Arne Duncan, along with Joel Klein, on some initiatives that Chancellor Klein and I have been moving towards. One, of course, is the new community college effort, and most recently with Governor Jed Bush, former Governor Jed Bush, who is talking to us about some ideas that I think may indeed be something that we want to consider. I'd like to thank Vice Chancellors Gillian Small and Gary Moore for organizing panels of faculty and students to testify about the decade of science. I was not at that council meeting, but I was told by a number of councilmen that they were deeply impressed by the depth of the ideas and the faculties that testified, and I'd like to thank the two of you for doing that. And we had a wonderful city council committee meeting dealing with CUNY's veterans programs that Gary Moore headed up for us. On the state side, we are pursuing a modest investment program this year as a result of the good work that collectively took place in securing investment dollars for the university on the senior college side. Vice Chancellor Ernesto Malave is in touch now with each of our presidents to indicate guidelines on how that investment program will take shape. I have been talking with the top people in the budget office, meeting with Robert Magna, the new state budget director, and emboldened by the opportunities that will face us in the near future, but want, again, to bring out the view that I believe, and I think many of us around this table believe, that we are going to be facing some very choppy waters sometime next year. Again, part of the reason that we were able to have stability and some investment was in part because of the stimulus package that Congress enacted. But when those dollars dissipate and flow with less regularity and robustness -- But when those dollars dissipate and flow with less regularity and robustness, the facts remain that this state still is facing enormous challenges, both at the state and the city level. And we've already directed our budget people here to, and we've been doing this for a while, this is not a new directive or a new set of discussions, but we are being very, very prudent and thoughtful in the way in which we are deploying our resources. And Vice Chancellor Malave, along with members of his staff, are really taking this to heart as we take a long view with respect to the potential resources that this university has. The CUNY Task Force on the Establishment of a School of Pharmacy, a CUNY School of Pharmacy at York College, is off and running. Trustee Manfred Philip has agreed to chair that task force, and we will be anxiously seeing and learning of their deliberations and recommendations over the next several months. I'm pleased that the workforce education funding for CUNY was included in the recent announcement of our mayor and Labor Secretary Solis involving stimulus training dollars that will be about $4.3 million. And on a very personal note, my chief of staff Barbara Cora. And Barbara, if you are watching CUNY TV tonight, I want to thank you and for the very good work that you do, but most importantly, to congratulate you and your husband Mark on the birth of Wesley Cora Friedman. Thirteen pounds, eight pounds, thirteen ounces, twenty-one inches long.
We'll now turn to items requiring the trustees to vote. I'd like to move the adoption of the chancellor's university report for June 22, 2009. Copies of that document are on the table. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions on the report? All in favor, say aye, please. Any opposed, abstentions, that carries. Next, I'd like to move the adoption of the minutes of the regular board meeting and executive session of April 27, 2009. You have a copy of the minutes behind Section 2 of your board books. May I have a second to that?
Second.
Are there any comments on the minutes? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions, the minutes carry. We'll turn next to the committee reports. We'll hear first from the Committee on Fiscal Affairs. May I call on trustee Mark Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee on Fiscal Affairs met on June 1st and approved the following four resolutions. I'll present all the items together and then move for their approval and adoption. Calendar item 3A is a resolution calling on the board of trustees to authorize the Office of General Counsel to execute a contract on behalf of the Office of the University Controller to purchase proficiency test scoring, rescoring, and reporting of scores services. The contract to be awarded to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder after public advertisement and sealed bidding by the Office of the University Controller. Such purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $3.675 million per fiscal year. The contract term is five years with the option to terminate on each anniversary date. Calendar item 3B, a companion resolution calling on the board of trustees to authorize the Office of General Counsel to execute a contract on behalf of the University Controller to purchase proficiency test form development, production, and distribution services. The contract to be awarded to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder after public advertisement and sealed bidding by the Office of the University Controller. Such purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $1.55 million per fiscal year. The contract term is five years with the option to terminate on each anniversary date. Taking and passing the CUNY proficiency exam is a requirement for the associate degree of entry into the upper division of the CUNY's bachelor programs. Approximately 30,000 students are tested annually by these programs. Calendar item 3C is a resolution to authorize the General Counsel to execute a contract with the Lincoln Center Institute for the provision of an arts education collaboration between CUNY and LCI. The term of the agreement shall be for three years with an option for two one-year renewals at the pricing provided in said agreement. The agreement shall commence as of September 1, 2009, and the university's purchases shall not exceed $140,000 per fiscal year. The LCI-CUNY collaboration, which began in 1994, will continue to provide CUNY education students and CUNY faculty with a wide range of arts education and research opportunities designed to help CUNY students and CUNY faculty with the benefits of aesthetic education. Currently, Hunter College, Brooklyn College, City College, Lehman College, and Queens College participate in the program. Calendar item 3D is a resolution requesting that the City University of New York adopt a revised schedule of tuition and fees for students enrolled in the Baruch International Executive Program effective Fall 2009, and be further resolved that the students enrolled in these programs pay the prevailing in-state tuition for graduate students and a separate program fee of $3,000. And be further resolved that the board of trustees of the City University of New York authorize the General Counsel and Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs to execute a contract on behalf of Baruch College to purchase services to operate the executive programs for a period of one year. The contract shall be awarded on the basis of best value to a responsive and responsible offer or after public advertisement and timely submission of sealed proposals pursuant to law and university regulations. Baruch College offers a sequence of graduate-level courses. These programs, which are an international extension of the successful ones offered locally by Baruch, currently operate in Israel, Singapore, Paris, and Taipei. Classes in these programs are taught by full-time and adjunct faculty from the Zicklin School of Business. The separate program fee will help meet the additional costs associated with the operations of these international programs. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar items 3A through 3D.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there questions for the committee on any of these four items? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions, those four items carry. Anything further?
Just to note that following the approval of these action items, Barry Kaufman, the University Controller, gave a description of the KPMG 2009 Audit Plan, and Vice Chancellor Malave also gave us a report on the New York City 2010 Executive Budget, which the chancellor talked about. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We're changing the order of committees because we're going to lose one of our committee chairs who has to leave early, so we'll hear next from the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration. May I call on trustee Valerie Beal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration met on June 1, 2009 to consider two items, 5A and 5B, which I will now present to the board for its approval. In addition, there are another four items that require the board's approval, which I will present following the regular calendar items. Item 5A, amendments to the governance plan of LaGuardia Community College. Last year, the board adopted amendments to LaGuardia's government plan as an interim measure to allow the college senate to conduct its business in compliance with the New York State Open Meetings Law. These proposed amendments eliminate obsolete features and improve the method for amending the plan at the college level. The proposals will add a new committee on faculty that will formally confer degrees and makes policy recommendations on matters that impact the welfare of the faculty and also create a subcommittee on academic freedom. Likewise, a new committee of students will be formed to recommend student candidates for the standing committees and to make policy recommendations to the senate on matters that impact the welfare of the students. The proposed amendments have been adopted by the LaGuardia College Senate and are supported by the college president. The Board Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration has reviewed them and recommends their adoption. Mr. Chair, I present item 5A for the board's consideration.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions on the governance plan amendments? And all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions, 5A carries.
Thank you. Item 5B, designation of three distinguished professors. I now present for the board's consideration the appointments of the following distinguished professors, effective September 1, 2009. The committee has reviewed each of these appointments and is pleased to recommend their approval. The appointment of Laird Burgad as distinguished professor in the Department of Latin American and Puerto Rican Studies at Lehman College. The appointment of Steven Steinberg as distinguished professor in the Department of Urban Studies at Queens College. The appointment of Graham Priest as distinguished professor in the Department of Philosophy at the Graduate Center. Mr. Chair, I am pleased to present these appointments for the board's approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions on these appointments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? We have three new distinguished professors. Congratulations.
Mr. Chair, I'm delighted that distinguished professor Steven Steinberg was able to join us today. I therefore would like to invite President James Myskin to introduce him to the board.
Thank you. Chairman Schmidt, Chancellor Goldstein, members of the board, I'd like to say just a few words about Queens College's newest distinguished professor. I think we'd all agree that it would be a good life's work to produce one solid book of scholarship that becomes a classic in its field. By that calculation, Steven Steinberg has lived three lives, as three of his books, Ethnic Myth, Turning Back, and Race Relations, are widely considered classics by scholars both here and in Europe. Dr. Steinberg's greatest achievement is that rather than simply accepting the received wisdom in the field of race relations, often referred to as the Chicago School, he challenged it and found it deeply flawed. Besides the startling new light Dr. Steinberg has shed on the field of race relations, his work is so influential in that it crosses numerous boundaries, gaining adherence from political science, anthropologists, historians, and philosophers. It's now my great pleasure to introduce our new distinguished professor of Urban Studies, Steven Steinberg.
Welcome.
Thank you, President Mysin. That generous introduction, and thank you for this honor. There's a tendency to think of this award as reflecting a person's individual achievement as a scholar. It is that, of course, but I know that my achievements were nurtured by a university that provided the framework, the resources, and above all, the freedom to pursue my intellectual project. As a sociologist who writes on race and ethnicity, I also reap the benefits of our immensely diverse student body. I learn vicariously from their stories, but even more than that, I learn how to turn the lens and to reflect knowledge claims, whether my own or those advanced by others, through their eyes reflecting their experiences, interests, and sensibilities. I also benefited from teaching in an interdisciplinary urban studies department committed to the principle that the cultivation and application of knowledge can advance the cause of social justice. So I accept this award with humility and with a renewed commitment to the mission and goals of this great university. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I will now present the additional items, copies of which have been provided to you. Item 5C, 2007-2010 Supplemental Agreement with the Professional Staff Congress, CUNY governing the Educational Opportunity Centers. The previous supplemental collective bargaining agreement between the university and PSC/UCNY expired on September 19, 2007. The resolution approves the successor agreement for the period 2007-2010 and authorizes the chancellor to execute said agreement. Mr. Chair, I present item 5C for the board's approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions for the committee? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions, 5C carries.
Thank you. Item 5D, 2008-2011 Agreement with the International Alliance of Theatrical Stage Employees Union Local One, governing employees at the Sylvia and Danny Kaye Playhouse at Hunter College, the Brooklyn Center for the Performing Arts at Brooklyn College, and the Hostess Center for the Arts and Culture at Hostess Community College. This resolution approves the successor collective bargaining agreement negotiated between CUNY and IATs Local One for the period 2008-2011, covering employees in CUNY theater titles at three campuses and authorizes the chancellor to execute said agreement. This agreement paralyzed the turns of the economic agreement reached with CUNY's blue and white collar units. Mr. Chair, I present item 5D for the board's approval.
May I have a second? Any questions on 5D for the committee? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions, 5D carries.
And Mr. Chair, it gives me great pleasure to present item 5E, a resolution to name the Christopher M. Kimmich Reading Room at Brooklyn College. I will read the resolution in its entirety. Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approve the naming of the Christopher M. Kimmich Reading Room in the Brooklyn College Library at Brooklyn College. Explanation: Under the leadership and guidance of Dr. Kimmich during the ten years of his presidency, the academic, cultural, and civic activities of Brooklyn College have flourished, and its campus has been rejuvenated and transformed by the renovation of the landmark LaGuardia Hall and the construction of a new West Quad building. Therefore, in deepest appreciation of the extraordinary contributions that Christopher M. Kimmich has made to Brooklyn College and the City University of New York, the university deems it particularly appropriate that the beautiful and important space formerly known as the Lily Pond Reading Room located at the Brooklyn College Library be known henceforth as the Christopher M. Kimmich Reading Room. Mr. Chair, I present item 5E for the board's approval.
I'll second that. Any comments or questions? If not, let's adopt it by acclamation.
And last, but surely not least, is a resolution to name the Edison O. Jackson Auditorium at Medgar Everas College. Again, I will read the resolution in its entirety. Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approve the naming of the Edison O. Jackson Auditorium in the School of Science, Health, and Technology Building at Medgar Everas College. Explanation: Under the leadership and guidance of Dr. Jackson during the twenty years of his presidency, extraordinary and transformational advancements were made to Medgar Everas College, including his successful efforts to obtain support from modern campus facilities. Therefore, in deepest appreciation, the university will designate a state-of-the-art auditorium located in the new School of Science, Health, and Technology Building, scheduled to open in June 2010, to be known as the Edison O. Jackson Auditorium. Mr. Chair, I present item 5F for the board's approval.
I'll second that item. Are there comments or questions for the committee? If not, all in favor signify with acclamation.
That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research. I'd like to call on trustee Wellington Chen.
Mr. Chairman, as a June meeting, the committee approved fourteen policy matters, so unless there's any objection... so unless there's any objection, I would like to read all fourteen items. Calendar number four A, Kingsboro Community College, Brooklyn College, ASBS and ASBA in Biotechnology Biology. This program's curriculum is designed to allow students to gain essential knowledge for the future advanced study in the biological sciences, while at the same time developing the specialized skills needed for future work in biotechnology. Students will have the option of seamless transfer into the third year of either the BS or the BA program in biology offer at Brooklyn College without any loss of credits. Calendar number four B, Hunter College MS in Biomedical Laboratory Management. This program is a collaboration between Hunter College and School of Continuing and Professional Studies and New York University. It will equip medical laboratory technologists with the knowledge and skill necessary to advance in their careers. In addition to advanced research technologies, the curriculum encompasses the increasingly complex areas of medical reimbursement, management of federal grants, and regulatory oversight. Vice Chancellor Schaefer, do you want to say something on this matter? In regard to NYU?
Yes, just to say that the final business details have not been completed, and obviously my office will review the form of the contract after those negotiations are done.
Yeah.
Thank you. Calendar number four C, Postos John Jay College of Criminal Justice, ASBS in Accounting for Forensics, Economics, Forensic Financial Analysis Track. This program's proposed curriculum combines accounting principles and finance, ethics and criminology, and law and investigation techniques. After earning their associate degree, students transfer seamlessly to John Jay College to earn their bachelor's. This dual joint program prepares students for employment where accounting firms and governmental entities engage in investigation and preventing illegal financial activity. Calendar number four D, BMCC John Jay College of Criminal Justice, AABA in Criminal Justice. The proposed joint program in criminal justice offered jointly by the BMCC and John Jay is similar to programs already registered with other community colleges. Graduates will be prepared for employment in law enforcement, corrections, court services, and security. Calendar number four E, John Jay College of Criminal Justice, BA in Global History. This innovative program is organized on the conceptual framework that emphasizes the connections between and among civilizations. The curriculum emphasizes key research and communication skills and provide a strong foundation for pursuing a graduate or law degree. Calendar number four F, John Jay College of Criminal Justice, MA in International Crime and Justice. The proposed program spans across three disciplinary areas: comparative criminology and criminal justice, transnational criminal crime research, and international law and human rights. Students will be highly competitive as applicants for doctoral studies as well as for employment in a number of fields related to researching, controlling, and preventing transnational crime. Calendar number four G, Brooklyn College BA in Children's Studies. This curriculum brings together knowledge about children and youth as seen from a variety of disciplinary perspectives: the social and natural sciences, arts and humanities, the law, and education. Students will be prepared to enter graduate studies in education, social work, and public policy. Calendar number four H, New York City College of Technology, Bachelor of Technology in Emerging Media Technologies. This cutting-edge program prepares students for developing interactive media products and services, emphasizing integrated skills in engineering, technology, computing, and design. Students will be prepared for careers in the entertainment and creative media industry. Calendar number four I, LaGuardia Community College, AA in Spanish Translation. This major will provide students with a strong foundation in Spanish language as well as in culture and literature in Latin of Latin America and Spain. Students will be able to transfer to a senior college and complete the bachelor's degree necessary to pursue a professional career utilizing Spanish language skills. Calendar number four J, LaGuardia Community College, AA in Philosophy. This program provides graduates with the first two years of their undergraduate liberal arts curriculum, enabling them to transfer to senior colleges to complete their baccalaureate degree. Students will acquire the core thinking abilities and communication skills that will serve as necessary foundation for further study in a number of academic and professional fields. Calendar number four K, LaGuardia Community College, AA in Communications. This program focuses on developing skills and competencies in oral and written communication, preparing students for transfer to a four-year program. After earning their baccalaureate degree, students may pursue a graduate or professional degrees in fields such as public relations, marketing, or speech pathology. Calendar number four L one, York College, establishment of three new schools, the School of Business and Information Systems, the School of Health and Behavioral Sciences, and the School of Arts and Sciences. The reorganization of existing departments into three new schools reflect the academic and institutional planning needs of the college. The fundamentals of faculty governance and administrative management will remain unchanged for the members of these departments. Calendar number four L two, York College, establishment of a Department of Business and Economics. This action is intended to strengthen the degree programs in economics, business administration, aviation management, and marketing, and to better serve the students in these programs. Seven faculties are being transferred from the Department of Accounting and Business to the new Department of Business and Economics. As a power of action in the Chancellor's University Report, the Department of Accounting and Business is being renamed as Department of Accounting and Finance. Calendar number four M, City University, establishment of a uniform university verification policy for Federal Title IV regulations. Under the federal regulations, students may only qualify for federal financial aid if the university is able to document that a student has begun attending a given course. Failing proper verification, students are denied financial aid, and the university may be subject to a substantial fine. Lack of consistency in the current verification procedures among campuses leads to the discrepancy in the data reported. In consultation with all constituencies, the chancellor will promulgate uniform guidelines and procedures to ensure compliance with Federal Title IV regulations. Calendar number four N, BMCC, the establishment of a Department of Media Arts and Technology. A new Department of Media Arts and Technology is being proposed in order to better serve students in the multimedia and video arts technologies programs. Two faculty members are being transferred to the new department from the Department of Music and Arts, three faculty members from the Department of Speech, Communication, and Theater Arts, and one faculty member from the Department of Computer Information Systems. Item four A through four N were approved by the committee and recommend the approval by the board.
May we have a second?
Second.
Questions for the committee on any of the items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Those carry.
Informational items. Item number one, update on the fall two thousand and nine enrollment management. Executive Vice Chancellor Alexander Lowe presented an oral report on the latest student enrollment data and the measures being implemented systemwide given the projected sharp increases in enrollment levels for fall two thousand and nine. CUNY is taking strong steps for fall two thousand and nine to support its mission of providing access to a high-quality education. Information on item number two, student complaint procedures. Vice Chancellor Frederick Schaefer circulated a memo summarizing the college's experiences with the student complaint procedure, which was first implemented in two thousand and seven. He provided a brief commentary on the document and explained the detailed discussions of the document and possible minor amendment of the procedure expect to take place in the fall two thousand and nine semester. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. I will turn to the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management, and I'd like to call on Trustee Mark Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee first met to figure out how to house the various programs that Trustee Chen just went through. The Committee on Facilities Planning and Management considered eight items at its board meeting on June first. These action items are listed in the board meeting as calendar items six A through six H. I'll go through them all and then ask for a consideration and approval. Item six A, resolution to authorize the City University Construction Fund to expend funds on contracts related to the Center for Sustainable Energy and the New Sustainable Business and Technology Incubator on behalf of the Bronx Community College. Phase one of this project will include the demolition of Patterson Hall, which has stood unused since CUNY received the building from the U.S. Army in two thousand and two. Once Patterson Hall is removed, the site will be used to house the Center for Sustainable Energy and a New Sustainable Business and Technology Incubator. The cost of this project does not exceed fifteen million dollars. Item six B, a resolution to authorize the City University Construction Fund to expend funds on a contract for construction of a new welcome center in the Namcom Commerce Center on behalf of the New York City College of Technology. New York City College of Technology currently has no central information resource for visitors and prospective students. This project will construct a welcome center in the Commerce Center where visitors and prospective students can go and get general information about the college, programs, facilities, courses, admissions, and financial aid. Cost of this project is not to exceed a total of approximately seven hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars. Item six C, a resolution to authorize City University of New York to execute development and operations agreement with the New York University School of Medicine or its affiliates for the new Medical Simulation Center, a public-private partnership between CUNY and NYU, and to authorize the City University Construction Fund to execute any documents related to the project on behalf of CUNY. This public-private partnership involving CUNY and the NYU School of Medicine will provide a state-of-the-art medical simulation center in Bellevue Hospital to be used for training and trauma management as well as first response in emergency medicine. The capital contribution is a grant to CUNY totaling twenty-one point four million dollars in state and city funds. Item six D, a resolution to authorize the City University Construction Fund to enter into a ground lease with One Hundred Eighteenth Street Residences LLC for a parcel of property in East Harlem for construction of a faculty residence, to authorize CUNY to execute agreements among the residents, the Bratsky Organization, and the City University Construction Fund related to the leasing development and management of the facility, and to authorize the CUNY Board of Trustees to provide the funds required to guarantee rents at the facility. The project will provide a fifty-eight-unit residence facility for faculty in order to attract new faculty and to enhance the educational mission of CUNY and the colleges. It will involve leasing property in East Harlem adjacent to the new campus for CUNY's Hunter College School of Social Work to be used as transitional housing, residence limited to one or two years, primarily for new faculty members. The rents on the units will be guaranteed by funds granted by the CUNY Board of Trustees. The financing terms, which will still be worked out with the bank, will involve HDC bonds, the City Housing Development Corporation, with rent revenues expected to cover the bond guarantee. Item six E, a resolution to authorize the execution of a new twenty-year lease at three ninety-five Hudson Street on behalf of the CUNY Central Office. The university's computer center has outgrown its current space at five fifty-five West Fifty-seventh Street, and after a long search for a new site, the facility at three ninety-five Hudson in Manhattan has been selected. The facility offers a hundred thirty-eight thousand square feet of rentable space that is already built out as a data center, which will save the university the significant costs of renovations. Site also includes office and support space as well as a backup generator, which is currently lacking at Fifty-seventh Street, and easy access to public transportation. Item six F, a resolution to authorize an amendment to a prior resolution approved September twenty-two oh eight for a lease agreement at thirty dash twenty Thompson Avenue, Long Island City, on behalf of LaGuardia Community College. The amendment's to authorize the addition of approximately twenty-three thousand rentable square feet to the terms of the lease agreement. This amendment will authorize the addition of approximately twenty-three thousand square feet to the terms of a previously approved lease at thirty dash twenty Thompson Avenue on behalf of LaGuardia Community College. The college will use this additional space to run a workforce development program being funded by a grant from the city's stimulus funds package. This grant will also fund the rent on the space for the first few years. After that, CUNY will assume the lease obligation for the space. Item six G, a resolution to authorize CUNY to extend by at most eighteen months an existing month-to-month lease of space at six twenty Isham Street in Washington Heights, New York, currently being used to support CUNY and the Heights General Education Programs jointly administered by the Hostess Community College and the BMCC. This resolution will authorize a short-term continuation of the university's lease of space currently being used by Hostess BMCC's CUNY and the Heights Program for residents in Upper Manhattan. Although the university's looking for other space, they have yet to find any that's available in the area. Item six H, a resolution to authorize CUNY to execute agreements as necessary related to a student housing facility at forty-five dash fifty-six Pearson Street, Long Island City. This project will provide a six-hundred-bed housing facility for CUNY students. Based on the results of a market demand study completed in January two thousand eight and an RFP issued in June two thousand eight, the developer for this project will not require a partnership with CUNY for either development or financing. CUNY's obligation will simply be to agree to direct students to the facility. Mr. Chairman, I hereby request the approval of these calendar items.
All right. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there questions for the committee on any of these facilities matters? Not? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Those all carry.
I'm done.
Anything further?
No, Mr. Chairman.
We'll turn next to the Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs. Call on Trustee Kathleen Pacili.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will present the report on calendar items seven A, seven B, seven C. The Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs met on June first, two thousand and nine, and approved calendar items seven A, seven B, and seven C. The committee resolved that the City University of New York's policy on drugs and alcohol be adopted effective July first, two thousand and nine. Federal law requires all institutions of higher education to certify to the Secretary of Education that they have adopted and implemented a program to prevent the use of illicit drugs and abuse of alcohol by students and employees. Although CUNY has long had rules prohibiting the unlawful possession, distribution, and use of illegal drugs and alcohol on university college premises or as part of the university college activities, this policy is needed in order to fully comply with the above-described federal law and to delineate clearly which individuals and offices at colleges are responsible for the necessary drug and alcohol education and biennial review. The policy sets forth a clear standard of conduct prohibiting the unlawful manufacture, distribution, dispension, possession, or use of drugs or alcohol on CUNY property, including new CUNY residence halls, in CUNY buses or vans, and in CUNY-sponsored activities. It also prohibits CUNY employees from illegally providing drugs and alcohol to CUNY students. Finally, it prohibits the possession or consumption of alcoholic beverages in CUNY residence halls. The policy sets forth the CUNY sanctions for violation of those standards and the responsibilities of CUNY college units with regard to drug and alcohol education, the annual dissemination of information to students and employees, and the biennial review. The Office of the General Counsel, working with other university offices, will be providing additional information to the colleges to use their annual distributions. Calendar item seven B, the City University of New York Residence Hall disciplinary procedures. The committee has resolved that the City University of New York Residence Hall disciplinary procedures be adopted effective July one, two thousand and nine. In the past few years, the City University of New York has been introducing residence life options at a number of its colleges. The Towers is in operation at City College. Lehman College has opened a small residence facility near the campus. The Summit at Queens College will be opening in fall, two thousand and nine, and plans are well underway for the Residence Hall at the College of Staten Island. In addition, Hunter College's Brookdale Residence Hall has been in operation for a number of years. For CUNY's residence halls to function as effective learning communities, however, CUNY needs to ensure that all students who live in the residence halls behave lawfully and responsibly. These procedures are intended to protect the health and safety of the entire Residence Hall community by providing for discipline of students living in the residence halls who engage in inappropriate behavior. At the same time, the procedures are designed to ensure that the rights of student residents accused of engaging in inappropriate conduct are respected. Calendar item seven C, Brooklyn College Student Activity Fee Increase. The committee resolved that the student activity fees paid by the undergraduate college -- The committee resolved that the student activity fees paid by the undergraduate college of liberal arts and sciences, students at Brooklyn College, be increased by ten dollars for the fall and spring semesters, and by ten dollars for the summer semester effective Fall two thousand and nine. And it is further resolved that the student activity fee paid by students in the graduate division be increased by ten dollars for the fall and spring semester, and by ten dollars for the summer semester, effective Fall two thousand and nine semester. Two referenda were held in conjunction with student government elections held April twenty-seventh and twenty-ninth, two thousand and nine, to raise the healthcare clinic earmarking from ten dollars to twenty dollars. The vote on CLAS referendum was six hundred and twelve in favor and five hundred and eighty-four opposed. With twelve percent of the eligible students voting, the vote on the graduate division referendum was twenty-four in favor and eleven opposed, with one percent of the eligible students voting. The college president supports the increase. I now present calendar items seven A, B, and C. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Questions for the committee on any of these items? Vice Chancellor Schaefer.
Yeah, I just wanted to make an observation about item seven B. There was an amendment at the committee meeting that was adopted, and then after the committee meeting, that amendment was further amended or slightly modified with the consent of the members of the committee, so that the draft that's on file and that you're being asked to approve contains that additional amendment. Very briefly, at the committee meeting, the student representative asked that in determining whether to have peer review boards within each residence hall, each college would consult with the student government organization. After the meeting was over, we thought that in those colleges that have elected representatives within the residence halls, they would be the more appropriate body of students to consult with, and so that amendment was further amended in that way. Thank you.
Am I correct in believing that all these disciplinary standards and procedures apply to the student residence halls but not the faculty residence hall?
Yes, and I don't think we have a faculty residence hall yet, but these apply only to the student residence halls.
Of course, there's an irrevocable presumption that the faculty would never need such a...[1734.11][1734.11](LAUGHING). All right, so we're talking about the student residence halls in seven B. I'll take it until...[1742.11][1742.11](LAUGHING). Are there any further questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? All those items carry. Anything further to report?
That concludes my report.
I would like to move the adoption of the honorary degree candidates that you have in your book as the final page of section one. May I have a second on the honorary degree candidate?
Second.
Discussion or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? The honorary degree candidates carry. We'll now adjourn for the moment this public session to go into executive session. We will be resuming our public session at the conclusion of our executive session. Thank you.